We're going to call a meeting to order, the June 16th meeting of Allen County Council. Thank everybody for coming out, we're going to ask Councilor Ross for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let us pray, O heavenly Father, we be seated as we gather this evening, asking for that continued guidance with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we partake in the governance of our beloved county, these are all blessings we ask in our holy and most merciful name we pray, amen.
All right, welcome everyone, I think we have a call here, all five council persons are here, before we approve the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, we have a little situation at the airport from the whole group, I think the gentleman's here. Okay, we'd like to talk about that, we need to add it to the agenda on the new business, by increasing some money, so can I put that on the new business on the C, the whole group, Allen County Airport?
Yeah.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second, we'd like to delete approval of the minutes B and C because Ms. Judy, before we walked in, she did not have them completed from May 19th or May 9th, we'd just like to delete approval of those and go with A and D, so move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next. True. Okay, welcome everybody again to the June 16th meeting, I'm going to start with public comments, Ms. Toni Mates, you'll be first on the list.
Good evening, everybody.
Hold on, Ms. Toni, I was, Jen, I messed that up, does everybody have approval of the minutes for the 5th and 31st, I should ask for approval of the minutes, I'm sorry, Ms. Toni.
That's okay.
That's A and D.
You said A and D.
A and D, yeah, we wanted to remove B and C, so Ms. Judy, do you complete it, but A and D?
Chairman, make a motion, we approve A and D minutes of May 10th and May 31st respectively.
Second. Favor? Next. All right, true, I'll hold it, Ms. Toni, rushing, rushing, rushing.
Yes, okay.
All right, Ms. Toni.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, I'll be real short, when we built the Appleton Fire Station, when that was completed, the next on the list was the fire station for the Barton-St. Mark's area, since I hadn't heard anything in a long time, I spoke to Mr. Robinson about it, and about a year or so ago, there was money there to build that station, but nothing has been happening, so I was wondering, A, is the money still available, and B, will that be started soon, particularly with the weather and the dryness and everything, it would be nice that they have fire protection in that area, and that's the Barton-St. Mark's area.
Barton-St. Mark?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
You asked me to get you that information, I have that right here.
Penny sales tax, yeah, go ahead.
We, and I have a list that I, and Councilor Ross, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, we had a conversation with Parker Poe, what, with what item were you talking about?
The one for fire stations, I don't know if the penny sales tax delineates the actual Barton-St. Mark one, but it does have fire on there.
Chairman, I'm going to show you this, so you can see the list.
It should be on there.
It's on there, but it just may not be delineated as the Barton-St. Mark's one, it just may say county fire.
The ones I've got highlighted, Chairman, are the ones that are already in, but that's the list with the remaining ones, but the ones highlighted are the ones.
So with this, I mean, we all agree with this dry weather, I mean, it's really dry out there, and we're just at the beginning of summer, and those folks have no fire protection close by at all.
You know, only thing I see, I see St. Mark Community Center and land acquisition, that's like number 10 on the list.
There should be county fire there somewhere.
Number four, Chairman, says countywide fire.
Fire station expansion, is that what, okay, it didn't differentiate, okay, so that is next on the list.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, we'll get on that, because there's something in our financial area, we have money.
And if you flip back over to the front page, you'll see on line item number four, that the bank account of the 2018 Go Series Bond, if y'all could your balance, that is the amount of money that we have in that account.
So we have $745,453.77 left, that penny sales tax, correct?
That's in that, that's the amount of that bond account, and I convert it with the treasury.
One thing we're going to have to look at with this, just shooting from the hip, is the way things, the cost of, we're going to have to change, I don't know how you legally go about that, Mr. Wall, because I'm sure costs and all this stuff's going up dramatically, the cost of building and stuff and things like that, so we're going to need to figure out if we can adjust these, like, the next thing is if this is countywide fire station, which it is, I mean, I don't think $150,000 is going to be able to do anything at this point.
That's the whole premise when we spoke with Parker and Paul Rep, you know, we looked at this back in probably 2017, 2018.
Long time ago.
Yeah, we gave an estimate, but you don't want to get projects too far out of kiddles simply because of the costs.
Well, I know at one point, Ms. Lena Green had someone that was going to donate property for the station, but as far as I know, that was never accepted, and I never followed up on that.
Right. I made a call, you asked me to make a call, because of what Chairman's saying, you know, all costs have gone up over the years, one thing they said that council could do, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, is that council sees an item on the list that is no longer a viable item to do off the list, through the process that we go through, and then allocate that money that you'll need for additional costs to whatever project that we need.
They can abandon.
Yeah, right, am I right, Walker?
I've got a question on that, well, if a project didn't get completed, and if we can do that, and Fairfax Hut wasn't completed, I thought you couldn't deviate.
Now, you have to go by the, like, and I'll show you this, Chairperson, excuse me, Council One, Chair Taylor, you have to go by the list of the way they were listed, that's what I'm going for now, and that's what they're talking about right now, that fire station, which is going to be the next on the list, there's a hospital, got a generator, one who's armed, a day.
It's up there.
Okay, Fairfax Community Center, but it's not completed, so.
Right, but you can only, I'm sorry, we could only spend up to 250.
Okay, but if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that if we go through the fire, kind of our fire station, because costs is going up now, and we can delete some of the other projects?
They said if one of these projects is no longer viable, the council has a process, am I right, Walker, where they can do, whether that project, take that money.
Abandon.
Abandon it, and take that money and apply it to another.
That's what I'm asking, that's the question I'm asking, so therefore, of course, I'm going to look out for Fairfax Community Hut, because it's not finished yet, so if we can take some and delete, y'all using the word abandon, abandon them, and use some of that fund, and then trickle back up till we complete the project, we had, even though the hut is built, but it's not at share, so before we move to, and I'm not, I'm not saying do, if we go on, before we move on, we should make sure the project, everything is done, what needs to be done in that particular.
I think we would just have to look at it and see, because the deviation of abandonment certainly got to be.
Coming along, there's a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's some things we got to make certain that everything is in place, now, Fairfax Hut, for instance, I think there was additional money appropriated for Fairfax Hut to help with the completion, and I don't know if that's been completed at all, it has not?
No.
Okay, you still need additional funds?
Right.
Now, was the Fairfax Hut on this project or the last?
Fairfax Hut was on this one.
Was on this one? Okay, but we only allocated 250.
And I think that represented those.
He did give us $300,000, $300,000, but we need probably about 250 or 300 more to complete.
Good Lord. Ms. Mayor Riley, did Fairfax put any money into the building?
Did Fairfax?
Mm-hmm.
No.
The county's putting the whole bill for the community center, right?
Right.
And, okay, well, that's good, when they're going to, if you get the money, when can you complete it? It's a pretty building.
We, as a matter of fact, right now, we're getting some bid on it right now, and do what we can do on it with the money that we have, and we know it's not going to complete inside of it. Ms. Riley, Mayor Riley, if I may, you can come in.
Might as well be.
Okay, that's why I said.
Get a little off track here.
How far are you with that building? Inside is not completed at all. So the $300,000 didn't help, do anything on your side? It won't complete it. But you're still holding on to that $300,000? We still have that. So a price, and how much more you think you need? I told me about between 250 and 300.
To add to your 300 that you currently have?
Right.
Ooh, that's going to be a pretty interior, I ain't lying.
I think we need to see some estimates and costs before we start to delete stuff and add to that.
Everybody has.
Thank you, Ms. Toni.
Anyway, I'm just speaking on behalf of those folks, and hopefully we can get that fire station, thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Ann Rice.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to talk to you all about the Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit that we have coming to Allendale, and the Humanities Festival, South Carolina Humanities Festival that's going to be in Allendale, and all the things that we have going on, good things, so good things about Allendale, and so just some of the highlights, on Wednesday, August 24th, the Historical Society is going to have a meet and greet at the Brant Building, and that is to recruit membership and tell everybody what we're doing with the Historical Society, and also to give a preview of what Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit Voices and Votes will look like, and what we will be doing during the Humanities Festival, then we'll have an opening ceremony on September 8th, and the exhibit will be in the atrium of Saukahatchee, and we will also have the Savannah Riverside display in there also, we're supposed to have it in the museum, but since the museum won't be ready, it will be in the atrium. There will also be a postcard exhibit of all the lodgings that we had in Allendale once for a time, the traveling exhibit will be here until October 21st, so it'll be here five days a week, open from 10 to 5 each day for people to see, other special things we have, we have on Wednesday, September 14th, we'll have the opening ceremony at the Carolina Theater with James Felder as a speaker, then we will have historical displays in the library, we'll have a scavenger hunt at the library, we have self-guided tours, a tour of the courthouse, and then we have a Jason Cook musical concert at the Carolina Theater, then on Friday, we have the Topper Program, Al Goodyear's coming to talk about the collection there, we'll have a riding bus tour, and we'll have a barbecue cook-off on Saukahatchee campus on Friday night and Saturday, and then on Friday night at 6, it's Dear Allendale, it's a video show of things about Allendale, and then the 17th is Constitution Day, we will have Antique Car Show there at Saukahatchee along with a barbecue cook-off, there'll be a Family Festival on Memorial Avenue, we'll have a celebration of Constitutional Day at the theater, and we'll have historical videos at the theater, one will be on the hut, and one will be on the theater, and we'll have others that are on history of Allendale that Brian Fleming is doing interviews now with people, and then there'll be a performance of Gracie and Lacy at the Carolina Theater, and on Sunday, the 18th, we have a community worship service at the Baptist Church, we'll be asking all the churches in the county to participate, we'll have a taste of Allendale County on the grounds of Happy Home, and we'll be asking people to bring dishes, and we'll all have a community meal, and there'll be a quilt display in Happy Home Baptist Church, and the festival ends that day, but the voices and votes continue, and then on October 5th, we have Liz Smith, who's a humanities professor at Furman, that will come and speak at the theater, and on October 8th, we have Becoming Harriet Tubman at the Carolina Theater, and that's Natalie Dice, and during all this, the youth at the school will have come and looked at the display, and they will write essays, and we will give out prizes for the best essays, and also, the art council is having a porch contest, and we'll give out winners for that, so we have a lot of good things coming in September and October, so I hope y'all will participate, and I'll probably be back next month to ask y'all for a little help with one of the receptions.
Thank you, Ms. Ann. Okay, we're going to move into council reports, I'm first on the list, first of all, Mr. Goodson, I'll commend you, congratulations on that, I know it's been a long time coming, the financial report received, very nice work, council, we have to set up a budget workshop for the upcoming year's budget, which leads me to my push, Mr. Sanders, if I may, we're going to amend something so we can extend our budget into another month or so.
Yeah, I need to do a continuing resolution to continue with the current budget until you have a new budget in place.
Okay, how do we go about it, do we have to call a special call meeting to do that?
Do I have to?
Do we need a special call meeting to do that?
You have, you need to have the continuing resolution effective on July 1st.
Okay, we're talking to anybody who voted for a budget workshop, also, council, Mr. Andre Walker, how forward you guys this email, and everybody read this email?
Ready.
The attachment?
No, I didn't.
Okay, yeah, that's something we all need to think about, thank you, Mr. Walker, nice guy, I think he's looking for us to give him some money or some of his pardon money, I'm not exactly sure how the pardon money works, but he's looking for some answers pretty quick, so we need to talk.
I think we need to sit down and talk with him.
Okay, maybe bring him in a special meeting, okay, and we've got the airport folks here, I'll look at the rest of my time with them, we'll go ahead to Mr. Collins, Matthew, you're going to talk about, you and I talked earlier today, you're going to talk about the animal shelter, the rooster?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, that's fine, if you want to handle that, all right, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, so much I want to start, Ms. Capers called, I talked to Ms. Capers today, or a few days ago, went out there today, she has concerns with the animal shelter being located where it's located, and she, you know, she heard about the new mobile home coming in and taking up more room, and she said that she had asked council for years to put a fence around that jail, and it needs to be put by state mandate, it needs to be fenced, she said that she has her inmate workers out working in the yard while volunteers are walking dogs, and that's just, it's a recipe for disaster.
Absolutely, so we need to figure out either fence that place in, or find another home for the animal shelter, or do something, we need to do, I think we need to jump on that pretty quick before something happens bad, also talked to Chief Judge, Chief Magistrate Lord Branch, that building that they're housing in is absolute garbage. The floors are falling in, they've got black mold coming out of the air conditioning vents, it's just, it's embarrassing, it's absolutely embarrassing.
Man, I had asked Judge Branch to give it to Sheriff, because there's plenty of room down at the new facility, you know, for the magistrate, and they got a large room that could be used for the courtroom, I don't know why it hadn't happened.
Well, if you put magistrate in the same place, you can't share shots, I mean, you can do that, or?
Oh, yeah, in fact, you got a jailhouse and magistrate in the same place, courtrooms, there's no stature against that.
I wouldn't think they'd be in appropriation, I mean, they have to be segregated as far as their functions and where their offices are, but in the same building, I think, wouldn't be a problem.
There's a section in that building when you walk in on the left, would accommodate the magistrates.
What about the other offices located inside that magistrate's office?
They ain't magistrate.
I mean, I know, but we've got to have room for them somewhere.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying, if you could actually work out a deal with the sheriff department to house the magistrate there, you got plenty of room in that law enforcement center to do it, in fact, I kind of mentioned that to Tom at one time, you know, and, you know, he didn't seem to have a problem with it, but I wasn't going to initiate it, I thought when I mentioned it to Judge Branch, they would kind of get together and talk about it, and I think I mentioned it one time to Mayor Riley, I think it's, it's more than enough space, and you and I have been in that building more than once, it's plenty of room.
When I spoke to Judge Branch a couple of weeks ago, I went over to him, and we talked about sub-purpose budget, which I told him I addressed, but he meant, he told me the same thing, but he also, there's another building behind him, he told me that he would be glad to move in, which we didn't go, and I kind of shaped that, so Mayor Riley's not going to speak to that, but he was, there's another mobile unit right behind the magistrate.
I think it's full of, it's full of stuff, it looks worse, it looks worse than the building.
Well, he just mentioned to me that it was better and better shaped than the other one, but.
Well, it can be better, it can still be in terrible shape, that's something we need to address for sure, I think we need to.
One of our rooms in that comfort room, I'm looking for someone else to fall through it, it's sinking in.
Well, I walked in today, I'm a big guy, so it's dangerous.
Oh, yeah, and there's, there's been many incidents of insects and other critters getting in that facility.
And I guess there's two costly places around the old sheriff's office, where they just moved out, or made that chair, something in that area.
I thought about it too, but I don't know if it's under there, I know there was talk one time about possibly moving in from the first, sir.
Yeah, Public Works sent me an email today about possibly, yeah, possibly, Mr. James Aldis, yeah.
Well, I need to get, maybe, a few of us need to get together, a couple of us need to get together with Branch and the sheriff, and see if we can make something work, or.
We can SRS and donate another building, for that time.
I don't think you'd really, I wouldn't want to see another trailer.
We got enough portable buildings in the county.
Yeah, I just think my first choice would be to put the magistrate down in the law enforcement center.
I think we can get, commit together and talk, get them all together.
And who else is in that building, besides the magistrate, you know, Big Tim Mavicket, and, well, I think, and what would you put there, you know, we can't leave them just in the building.
There's room there.
I don't think, I worked there before, I don't think there's as much room, unless you, because I'm a deputy, we're here.
When we were there, there was at least 10, 10 or more offices in that building, it's really big, I was surprised, would you agree, Bill?
Okay.
Is that a yes?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
Well, so, you know, whatever we decide, I hope we can all commit to getting them some relief some kind of way, it's just been going on too long, also, we got a report from the Public Service Committee report for Allen County EMS, they had, let's see, 100-plus transfers, they're still working on the million-dollar grant, that looks like they're probably going to get, they've given us the list of all the equipment that will be purchased with that grant, and also, they're still begging for more employees for the EMS department, so I think during our budget process, if we can accommodate that, we certainly need to, I got a report from Allen County Detention Center, they served a total of 2,017 meals per month, they had 38 total inmate arrests, six by the Allen County Police, 22 by the sheriff, three by probation, one by Ohio Patrol, six by Fairfax Police, and a couple of transports, also, I met with, was asked to meet with Allen County Soul and War Conservation District Committee at their last meeting, they stated, the Sheriff John Rice stated that have not received any county funding in the last several years, and by state mandate, they have to have matching funds from the county, or they could be shut down, so they are, they are asking for $5,000 in operating funds for fiscal year '22, '23, so I think.
You have them submitting that money?
I do have here, and I will forward it to you, I think they sent it to us a few months back, and I missed it, I'd be glad to forward it to you.
All right, Councilor Goodie?
No, I'm waiting till executive session.
All right.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I do, John Fleming is here from Southern Carolina, I forgot you, John, Southern Carolina Alliance, you have a special guest that people in Allen County are going to be seeing much more frequently in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Goodie, for your time, and council, for everyone's time, so I want to introduce Holly McCrery, she's the new project manager for Southern Carolina Alliance, she's been on the job about six months, six weeks, and it feels like six months to her probably at this point, so you will see a lot more of both of us in Allendale County and around Allendale County, we look forward to continuing to work, and on that note, the spec building is scheduled to start construction this month, and I know you pointed out, we're three-quarters of the way through the month, it's a little hot, I don't know that they want to actually go out there and start, but they are scheduled to start construction on the spec building this month, and it is a 12-month construction window, we're already advertising that heavily, there's, as you're aware, developer partnered with us, they are advertising that as well, so we've got both sides working on it, as soon as they start, Commerce will then start advertising it, so you'll have, there'll be three departments advertising that building is available. be three departments advertising that building is available. There is a shortage of buildings, so we are getting traction on that building, even though it's not built yet. And we'll talk about on, in the resolutions, the other two buildings that in the, in Barnwell that have been taken already. So, beyond that, we continue to work. I know Gracie's been down here working, and then also on a product we're working with Department of Commerce to start developing the NIX Park in Allen Dale County that will be a rail server park that we've talked about before. But they have started funding some due diligence on that, and we're in the process of doing that work right now.
John, you mentioned rail parks?
It is a rail-served piece of property. CSX is excited, so there, again, there's not a lot of rail-served property that can be large contiguous acreage, so we're setting it up for hopefully a single large user, but it can also be accommodating multiple small users.
I hope it's going to be on Palton Road.
There's some work being done, there's some work being done right now.
John, could I ask you a question?
You can.
The Don tree manufacturer, it looks to me like he's shopping shipping packages.
He is doing some shipping. He does actually have some product in some, I know he has it in a local store in Hampton. I'm not sure about here, they are starting to ship. As you can see, they do have a lot of activity at that facility because they've leased, you know, that building is bigger than they needed, so they've leased some part of the building and mostly the parking lot to the fiber optic supplier that's running fiber optic conduit throughout Allen Dale and Hampton County. So, all those coils are going in the ground in these counties that are stacked up there right now.
What about our Turkish friends? Do they ever come?
Our Turkish friends are getting really close. I don't see Building Department here to, but they got permanent power turned on with Dominion. They have got their fire pump put in, so they are at their very last steps. And yes, that's been a much longer process than anyone would like. We don't want to say COVID's the reason, but they couldn't travel from Turkey to get over here. So, that one is very close.
Thank you, sir.
And then I will just bring up, unless you want me to come up, we do have the two resolutions on your agenda later, one for Kochen Company, which announced in Barnwell. They're 5.2 million and 101 jobs, and then, so you will generate that cost sharing of the Quad County Park. And then also, in Blackfield, in the spec building, so that spec building is now gone, Bill, you know that one.
That's good.
That building is gone. That was to TVA Building Products. They're 8.3 million and 122 jobs. So, those are the resolutions that we're going to ask you to pass tonight, where you will then be in that multi-county park, sharing on that tax revenue.
Is that 10, 10, 10, 70?
It is, it is, yes. It's the Quad County Park.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just want to talk a little bit about recreation. Of course, we will certainly sit down and talk to Mr. Andre Walker. Just some flyers I'm going to pass around, and it's not in chronological order, but the first one is football time. We're going to have early sign-up beginning June 18th. And our martial art program will begin. It's a karate, self-defense classes. It's going to be on Thursday, beginning at a later date.
If you can get 12 people to sign up, correct?
I think it's 10 and 12.
Oh, there's 12.
Okay. And our senior action group, Fun Day, will be June 24th. Our water park fun day will be July the 7th. And this is an annual event. This is the swallow-tail kite that comes each year to our region, and we have busloads of folks from all over the region. That will be July 23rd. And our recreation basketball program started June 14th, was then actually on Tuesday.
Yeah, they're letting kids come in on, in the Fairfax Gym on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, right? For you to shoot basketball stuff.
Right. And our virtual bingo for our seniors. It's a daily thing, so we ask a citizen to take, take advantage of some of these programs, especially our young adults and also our kids. And lastly, as we mentioned earlier on Mr. Walker, I get with Laurie, and we'll talk in depth and set up a meeting with counsel and Mr. Walker, so we can see exactly what he wants, what he needs. As far as the PRT money, part money, we can make a call to see exactly, once we get all the details, to see if some of that money can be used. And I think it's a good project. It seems like it's going to be self-sustaining.
Seems like a great project. My problem with the project is we putting a lot into that park. We're not doing nothing for Marson Parks, any of the parks in the town of Allen and Allen Dale County. And that's why all the resolutions are, but I'm only one of them as counsel, but I think all that money should be spread out throughout the county.
I certainly don't have a problem with that, and as I mentioned a few months ago, you know, Laurie and I, two, each one of the parks, and we just need to get the word out to the citizens. All the parks, except for the Martin Park, Martin Park, which I don't really count that at this point, they are viable, and they need to be put to use, and hopefully our citizens can go out there and do that. Also, last month, we talked about writing a letter, and this is addressed to Mr. Gibson, and I was given a go-do to get with you the wordsmith a letter to SC DOT on the inspection of the bridge on the, on the trail. And please give me a reminder so we can go ahead and get that letter sent to them. The engineers are waiting to get that letter so they can go ahead and put it on their list of things to do. And lastly, there's a project, you remember, six months ago, we had members from the Recreation Committee came and talked with us, and this council promised that they would do all they can for recreation, and I know it's about the time. But one of the things that we're working on right now is trying to convert, and this plan is stages right now, trying to convert the old Welcome Center into a RV park. We get a lot of visitors here. We don't have a bona fide RV park. That would be phase one, and phase two will include the Nature Trail, doing some additional work on the Nature Trail. And one of the things I would suggest counsel do, and I, as Mr. Gibson can verify, we were, he was asked to set up a meeting with Councilman Clyburn, rep, six, eight months ago, and I know there's been a lot of things under fire, but we need to set up a meeting with our delegation so we can go ahead and, and let them know exactly some of the things that we, we need and we'll be asking for. If we don't ask, we don't get, and that goes back to special project. I got a call maybe an hour ago from our rep concerning some, some projects that we didn't apply for, and there's some concerns about it, and I think we need to be a little bit more proactive, reaching out to our delegation, our senators, our reps. And as you know, Lowell Savannah have an annual meeting every January, usually Barnwell, Aiken, Orangeburg, where the entire delegation for our region, the sixth county region, come together, and we have a chance to talk with them and give them some ideas, and also some of the things we like to see them do. So, I would like to think we should have an annual sit-down meeting with our, with our delegation statewide as well as congressional. So, I hope we can do that in the future. Thank you, sir.
All right. Ms. Tagle?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to mention up in my report that it was brought to my attention that a meeting was requested by the Allen County Treasurer, Ms. Alice Kirkin, on Monday, June 13, 2022, at 1:00 PM, and the meeting was not properly advertised for the citizens applying to the state guidelines. The rules are, the three or more council members meet the necessary quorum to have a meeting. However, we must publicize, we must, we must give a public notice, be made advertised to news media website posted for the public within 24 hours. And I didn't know if Ms. Judy did that or not. Did you post it?
I wasn't aware of the meeting.
Okay, well.
I didn't get my notification. I didn't check my email. That email went out Friday afternoon. I left my office. I didn't get my email until Monday morning.
Now, we just need to keep in mind, we should not meet on the three or more. We got to publicize so the, so the public will be informed on what we're doing. We have a full council there. And the next thing is, you know, the street committee, we already know a lot going on, and I'm just, I'm requesting that we do an in-house audit on the administrative office. Since the auditors are here, we're trying to get one done ASAP.
What, you want to audit finances? What do you want to audit us?
Finances, yeah.
Finances, okay.
We need to get that done. Next, we need to, and I guess this is to Mr. Goodson, are jobs being advertised, or are we advertising for jobs openly in the county? And if so, where at? Because citizens are asking me about jobs, and I know, I don't know what the status is at the smallest of times.
Current jobs are being advertised, are being advertised on our website and on indee.com and through SC Works. And I can have, I can have them put on the radio as well. In the last several months, I interviewed a lady, very nice lady, called her next Wednesday to offer her the job, and told her to come into the office at 11 o'clock on Friday so that we could discuss the details, and she never showed up. I called another lady, who was brought to my attention, talked to her on the phone. I tell you this, Mr. Counsel Robinson, set up an interview with her, she never showed up. People are not showing up for jobs, not just with the county, in this paper, but all across the country. Obviously, I, I'm, appears that there are people who don't want to work now. I'm advertising and I'm talking to people, but I can't get them into office and offer them a job if they don't come in.
And it's good that you talked to Mr. Robinson, but I'm a personnel committee as well, and I would appreciate if you contacted me as well.
I would be more than happy.
Yeah, but Mr. Robinson, you not telling me what's, you know, that, I would ask that question if I had known.
Sure, sure.
So, you got to keep me informed. If I'm a personnel, I need to know.
It wasn't, I think that information was given to me not as a personnel committee member, but just in general conversation. But you're right, if anything to do with personnel, as we spoke several days ago, I'll let you know. This has been several, maybe three or four weeks, and Bill mentioned that to me, but not a problem. I'd be happy to keep you informed.
But there have been other issues that you haven't informed me on as well, so, and as dealing with personnel, I'm just saying, if we have better communication, this is just part of my report, that we have better communication to let me know what's going on than I would have to just call it out immediately.
And I certainly, when we had the conversation, we, we could so go, I told you I would. This happened three or four weeks ago, prior to our conversation.
And, um.
I haven't talked to Bill about personnel since we spoke.
Thank you. And the next thing I had, everybody got, I requested from our attorney, and I don't know who this, I'm going to guess they asked the chairman, this, who drew up the administrative contract?
I do not remember at this point, to be totally honest with you. It's been, what, three years ago, Bill?
No, this was the last one he got.
I don't remember.
The first two, when he got two.
I don't remember who drew the contract, to be honest with you.
Well, what we need to do, again, we need to communicate better, because our county attorney did not even get to read it. He didn't draw it up. So, and everything we normally do, we usually run it through our attorney, the Allen County Attorney. So, I would hope in the future, whatever we do, we run it through our county attorney, so when we ask questions, when we have some question, we have knowledge of it. It's just better communication.
Just curious why that's coming at this point?
Well, it's because that's executive session.
You didn't sign the contract, so I mean.
Miss Snyder had nothing to do with the right, we knowing what's going on.
Just curious.
And as you know, what's going on, so therefore, there's some questions I have to ask, and I'll do that in the executive session.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy.
All right. Administrative report.
To touch on what Councilman Robinson was talking about, reaching out to delegation members, I met with Congressman Clyburn two months ago in Orangeburg after Dean Allen talking about a national grant that he had applied for, for the Rescue Squad, for I believe is around $700,000. That was on a Thursday evening. I'd already planned to go to Orangeburg, because Congressman Clyburn was there. I approached him when I got there. I told him of the needs we had in Allen Dale County, not just about that grant for the Rescue Squad, but I talked about the smallest amount of money we got, the 1.6 million, that was based on population, and I spoke to him one-on-one about the emergency services departments in our county, not only the equipment, but the personnel that was exiting to our surrounding counties. They got two and three times more the amount of money that we got. Within a week, I was having a meeting in Columbia with his representative, okay, who took that regional application, or grant application that Dean Allen had written, and brought it local to the local USDA, so that we could be pretty much, I don't want to use the word guaranteed, but pretty much, you want to make sure our emergency services got the money. I met Dean Allen, I went and met in Orangeburg with the head of the USDA, who basically gave Dean the application to transfer over, and basically we found out that there's a one-time pot of money for a million dollars. And so, he transferred the equipment for the Rescue Squad over that application, and also was able to get the coroner's office, I believe, a new vehicle, Ms. Rob, added into that to make up that million dollars. That grant will be awarded by the end of this month. What I also found out while I was there, that since the Rescue Squad is a nonprofit and is not connected to the county, the county had the option to get a million dollars. So, I've got two million-dollar grants, and that is going to replace that, the million-dollar grant for the county will address the sheriff's department, and the radios that have to be replaced next year won't cost the county a dime.
Exactly.
All right?
So, you, so you agree that reaching out to our congressional delegation is a plus?
And if I can finish telling you about that. We got the radios that they came and talked to counsel about, that we thought we might have financed. I talked, I met with the sheriff, and it's going to be the radios, they need new computers, and then they've got the equipment on vehicles. So, whatever the money's left on that, and Dean Allen is currently writing that grant up for us and getting that submitted, so we'll have two million-dollar to deal with the Rescue Squad and with the sheriff's department, so, very good. Second thing is, I like to bring counsel's attention to the billing of the sheriff's coverage to the town of Allen Dale. We have billed them for six weeks already, which totaled $10,935.41. The town paid for those weeks, which totaled $6,086.85. So, they just said it was currently two weeks, and that's just getting those bills out by paper, right, that's my breath. The next item deals with fuel at the airport. I received a call about 10 minutes to 5 yesterday from SWED. They had called around and found out that we had the lowest price in jet fuel, and they needed to purchase 1,558 gallons. They were quoted $4.89 per gallon. He was ready to purchase. He called the airport that morning, he called back and did not get an answer at 10 minutes to 5, so we called the administration building and got me. So, they were sending a truck down this afternoon to purchase. We had, I think, 7,000 gallons of jet fuel, and they were coming down to make that purchase. What was, I guess, amazing to me is that they were coming all the way to Allen Dale in a truck to purchase jet fuel and take it back to Columbia, because we had the lowest price in jet fuel.
You had called me yesterday about that, as you looked for Mr. All, and I talked to Councilman Collins. We started, he started looking it up online, and we are a lot cheaper than anybody else in jet fuel. I want to ask, we get with the airport, I mean, I was going to ask her a couple of questions about it, if you don't mind, yeah. I'm just curious about that.
All right. And that's all I have?
One, one thing, Bill, we, we the cheapest on jet fuel, we making any money off of it?
Well, that, that's the thing, and I did ask, I, I did, did you look up some costs for it?
We did, I mentioned, and I don't, I didn't ring my phone in, but I'm.
And I do have some costs.
We're making a profit.
We don't sell it, we don't sell it at cost. We are making a profit.
I was, I'd like to talk to Airport Minister, for the. I was, I'd like to talk to airport administration, before we can clarify on that. I just had a couple of ideas that we may could bring up, if y'all would like to. All right, Mr. Sanders?
Just one thing, just for information purposes. The deed to Allen County from the Allen County Historical Society of the, what I probably had field building to be used for the Allen County Museum, has been recorded, so the county now owns that bill.
Wow, good.
Very good. All right, that's it?
That's it.
All right, a new business resolution, resolution and amendment agreement Coke and Company, Project Kansas. Which one is this? John, help me a little bit on these. Push the switch. This one is Coke.
Which company?
First one, this one here. Matthew, you already topped part of that. We just need to top part, correct?
That's correct.
All right, Matthew?
A resolution to amend the amended and restated master agreement for establishment of the Quad County Industrial Park I, Part II, and Part III dated as of May 6, 2013. By and among Allen County, South Carolina, Banburg County, South Carolina, Barlow County, South Carolina, and Hampton County, South Carolina. Providing for the development of certain multi-county industrial parks, so as to include additional property in that portion of the parks geographically located in Barlow County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto.
All right, you continue? No, that's all. I'll tell you the first top part, right?
Make a motion with approval.
Second. Fair?
I'm just getting second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and Charlie, read the second one if you'd like to. This is for Project Decked Out.
Correct.
A resolution to amend, let's see if it's right. A resolution to amend the amended and restated master agreement for the establishment of the Quad County Industrial Park I, Part II, and Part III dated as of May 6, 2013. By and among Allen County, South Carolina, Banburg County, South Carolina, Barlow County, South Carolina, and Hampton County, South Carolina. Providing for the development of certain multi-county industrial parks, so as to include additional property in that portion of the parks geographically located in Barlow County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto.
That's same thing?
Make a motion with approval.
Second? Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies? Thank you. I do have one thing we did not talk about. Donnie came to me with a proposal about our cell phone contract. Donnie, you got that information, that you want to hold, you want to come to the executive session with us? Not a big deal, it's just how we can save money on cell phones, we need an executive, we're doing out here. I mean, I didn't realize, I looked up and saw Don.
I want you to say it for executive.
Say it, say it, that's fine. Don, please bring it first, ladies, it's not a big deal. All right, make a motion.
Motion to go on executive session. Second.
Fair?
I'm just putting the F on.
Oh, I'm skipping a thing, I'm sorry. Can't read one right, and I apologize. That was Judy's written on the bottom, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. All, come on down, I apologize. I do apologize, I'm always in a hurry. Come on down. Mr. Depp, how about you today?
Hi, hi, yeah, thank you.
Good, good.
Everyone, good evening.
Since we got jet fuel on demand, before we start, let's talk about that first. I realize we like to be less than the price of jet fuel, I mean, we're a lot less, anyway, we could go up on that. I mean, we buy it and market it at a certain percentage when we buy it, or how does that work?
Yeah, what happened, we get usually a dollar eighty-eight cent on each gallon.
Right.
And two months ago, we were selling a lot, then we bought jet fuel, and the prices went up, we were like, really up there with everyone else, so our jet fuel sales stopped. We usually get one load of jet fuel a year, and that's what we sell.
Okay.
This year, it picked up a little because of the, because of our prices. So with the jet fuel not selling at all, because our prices was like too high, I took and dropped it down a little bit to 4.89 instead of 5.18.
What worries me is if we, if we lose, I mean, we have to retain it, so it kind of scares me a little bit.
It's like 29 cent, 29 cent cheaper than the 1.88. So that's what our profit is right now.
Okay.
So we still getting a nice profit, and we're getting the business, because now, like, when our fuel usually sits there for a whole year.
Right.
Just like Bill Goodson had brought out, that because SLED, they don't, they have never bought from us before. But they came down today and they bought 13,000, 1,300 and something gallons. Was close to between 1,300 and 1,400 gallons of fuel. So we made $6,000 off of that sale, and then they're, they want to come back with another tanker, if they can get another tanker.
And we're not as cheap.
Not yet. We will still have probably about 3,000 something jet fuel left. But it's better to sell it than it just sitting there for a whole year and not doing anything. And then if the prices drop.
Well, traditionally, we've always, and I know when Ben was there, we always had, and even for, even after Ben, your predecessor. We, one of the driving focuses on our airport, and the increased traffic we get in airport is Ben, our fuel, because pilots will get online and see. And they don't mind traveling a few extra nautical miles to.
And they have been, and they have been coming in.
Yes.
Because right now.
That certainly helps us in terms of showing that we do have planes flying in.
Mr. All, you told me we were the cheapest. He obviously searched.
Yeah.
Just want to make more money, we bumped a little bit, still be the cheapest.
Just remember, you got to replace that fuel when you sell it. And I don't know what the price will be the next time you go buy.
Yes, we will have to replace it. So looking at now where we are now, because what happens is that people just bought and their prices just went over ours. Because other than that, like, less than a month ago, we were the highest, one of the highest. So because of the drop, that's why the businesses are coming back to us again. But looking at where the prices are now, we probably could raise it back up a little bit. But we are selling, and we're selling more than anybody else is selling.
Like you meant. Don, come on up.
Ryan.
Ryan.
Yes, sir. Ryan was Holt Consulting, or the engineering consultant for the airport. And this is in reference to a project we recently completed the design on, it's an apron reconstruction project out at the airport. Apron and taxi lane, and what that entails is removing all the existing apron where the planes park and tie down. And the taxi lanes around the existing T-hanger, reconstructing all of that pavement with new pavement, new tie downs, new drainage. So this is a project that we pulled together. It was bid in February, and we made a recommendation for award to the, to the low bidder. A grant application was submitted in April to the FAA. And just got an update last week from the FAA that do intend to move forward with the project and, and fund the, the full portion of the project. So typically with the FAA, what that looks like is 90% FAA funds, and then typically a 5% local match. And South Carolina Aeronautics typically does a 5% match to match the, the local share. So the project totals, the construction, as well as professional services, total project was $1,617,333. And the FAA portion of that would be $1,455,599. The state and local shares would both be $80,867.
And that's an increase over the budget, what we originally budgeted for, correct?
The, what was originally, maybe somebody can speak to the budget, but I believe on the latest CIP, an estimated 1.5 million total project. So there'd be a 75,000 local match.
So it's 5,000?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what we'd originally budgeted for, right? And you need to have this approved by June 18th. And Mr. Oswald spoke to him about it, it needs to be approved by June 18th, is that correct?
Yes, sir. For the counter, or excuse me, for the contractor, the low bidder, they'll hold their bid prices for 120 days. And that expires July 18th.
It's July 18th?
Yes, sir. So we need to give the, the low bidder a notice of award and get in a contract. The FAA grants, the announcement was made last week, and from what we've heard, they intend to issue the grant within the next couple of weeks. For the AIP portion, and then there's another grant for the bipartisan infrastructure law they intend to issue in July.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
The other half of the 1.6 million that we were getting in office is automatic drawdown. I've already done the report for the first half. The, they've changed, they had an equation that you could use, it's called loss of revenue for your budget. But in talking to the National Association of Counties, they, they have to allow, we, we should be able to, we can use up to all of the second half of that money in our budget. If we need to for line items in the budget, so, you know what I'm saying, for grant match or whatever we do.
Well, basically, you're asking the council to, and I'd approve, approve this.
80,000, increase it 5,000 based on the budget. That's all we.
Yes, sir. 80,000 total would be the local share, 80,867.
Chairman?
Yeah?
If I may know, or I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Becca?
All in favor? Ladies?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I saw, I thought I saw the sheriff came in.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Carter?
Yeah, lady.
Okay.
Did you speak to Tom or something, or?
I want to, I got a question.
Now, I'm in the executive session, it don't matter.
Okay, that's fine.
I wanted to mention something. Tom sent you, you hear? The new facility, which, a new facility, we were talking about, and I thought I had mentioned it to you.
I knew you were probably bringing this up in the executive session, don't you, or?
What?
You gonna put him on the spot?
Yeah, I'm gonna put me on the spot.
No, no, I thought we, I thought we, we talked about, I knew I mentioned it during the branch, and I thought I might mention it to you, but I know you've been over there a couple of weeks. Do you think you can accommodate the magistrate?
No, we cannot, because once I get back to what we call full staff, I'm going to be full again. There's no place, there's not enough people here. And nobody has been in there, even looking in the building since we've been there, but no, so I can't.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Carter to add to that, I used to work there, so I know what the building look like.
I just thought when we looked at it about probably a year or so ago, that left side, like left wing, which is kind of up and around. I thought that would be sufficient, but you've been over there, you know.
It won't.
Okay.
I've got another idea, maybe we'll see the magistrate doing, I'll bring him to the executive session, so we don't. Okay. All right. We have, do we second motion?
Oh, the motion.
Make a executive session?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Bill, we have one thing to go before we go back to the conference.
First, a little session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a proposal from Horizon for a phone system.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Nays?
And secondly, I make a motion, we adjourned.
All in favor? Second.
I'm sorry.
What time on Tuesday?
Four o'clock. We adjourn. Four o'clock on Tuesday works for y'all?
Yep.
If we set the first committee meeting up, what may do it?
Where at?
Admin Bill suits you. Y'all want to do it here or how many did?